To recess until our turn? This is motion okay. Okay, five moves, second then we do what? We just go recess?
Yes.
Until the... The attorney comes? Alright, you got that in the record, isn't it?
Motion to recess until the city attorney...
My motion, my motion was just to recess. Motion was just to...
In discussion, in discussion.
Yes, sir. My motion was just to recess.
Oh, just to recess? We got to get recessed. Now the attorney is here. We never took a vote. Now the attorney is here, um, if you're not for item again, no one's heard of it.
The first item for discussion is discussion on approval of the seizure of proclamation resolution.
Ladies and gentlemen, I think you had in your reading what we were attempting to do in conversation with you first, and the manager was put some type of procedure together for, uh, for proclamation and then try to help us to fix the bad habits of law. So I will open these questions up. And now, first, you want to say anything about the change of the method?
It is to help us regulate them better and there's an application. Citizens will be required to fill out the application and submit to us so that we have all of the information that we need for the proclamation. You all will approve them, of course, for them going forward.
Now then, let's go. Get him to see. He was not ready? Okay, he must have with that. Alright, now, your yard is not even gone.
I don't understand. We haven't expanded work session for agenda that includes items of the regular attend.
Expanded work session, they're good. He says, this is... Mayor, do you want to answer that?
Um, Councilmember Giller, the items one, two, and three were on a previous agenda and that pulled to the next meeting, so they did never get, they never got discussed. So those are previous items that was on a previous agenda, so they come to this work session for discussion. But items one and two have been ruled.
So, so we have discussion but not vote on them until we go to the regular attend to correct the...
Yes, that's possible.
Okay, and where are we, uh, let's go.
So, I have a few questions in regards to the proclamation, trying to pull it up. My first question, I know we write the proclamations, is that... Are you, is your office going to be willing to help us, your writing the proclamations or anything of that nature with this new process? Because that is also part of the reason as to why there's, you know, delay of writing, you know, the communications for the proclamations. So is that something your office can take on for us?
I'm sorry, no, uh, the, um, the application, um, has a place for you to kind of put the information in and you can fill it in. We'll have a template so that you can fill in the information for the proclamation.
So what do we do in cases where there are things that, um, pop up and we don't necessarily have the fourteen day window? I think I believe that's what I read, the fourteen day window. So is there, um, any type of provisions for that or are you just going to not do proclamations for...
These were proclamation that are basically going to the agenda and, um, the fourteen days is to give us window of time to do them and have them on the scheduled meeting. If you have proclamation that come up for something at the spur of the moment, we will still do them.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just listening.
Can we, I just think fourteen days is a lot of time.
I think fourteen days is a lot of time, um... Does we have about, what, ten days between each council meeting? On the norm, we read on the second and fourth, so I'd be talking about one, two, three, four, five. Yeah, about ten business, about ten business days. I would like to see that reduced to maybe, uh, and so you're saying you got, we got to have this application in ten days in advance?
Well, we went with the norm, uh, we checked with other municipalities to see what their standard was and the standard was fourteen days, so that's why we went with fourteen days.
Yeah, but some municipalities, they only have, uh, right, we, we need twice. So some municipalities need one of them, some of them need, uh, you know, less frequent than what we do, especially the smaller municipalities. And so I would like to reduce it, uh, maybe ten.
Two ten.
It's here, yes.
Mr. Giller?
I have a couple of questions. One, under recipient, um, a person that was valued within the city for a substantial part of their life, who determines what substantial is and what is not? That's number one. And number two is, um, um, positive issues of life that are in the interest. So who determines what positive is and what is not? And then, um, a major event, what's a major event, what's a minor event? And major accomplishments, what's major accomplishments and minor accomplishments? So unless those things are defined, um, we don't know when we're submitting someone, you know, whether it's major or minor, so there needs to be some type of definition associated with it.
Well, my recommend, my recommendation would be to remove the definitions and just leave it with the councilmen's discretion because I think that even if you have sufficient ability to determine whether something that you put out and present in your major cities may lose those standards.
Right, I, I just wanted to make sure that when, you know, when it raises, that it doesn't be returned with someone saying, you know, that's not major.
No, when the application comes in, we would, um, I think it's on the application of the area for the, where they live at, we would send it out to council for someone to sponsor it. Say if an applicant or citizen just happened to, don't contact any of you and wants a proclamation. Then we would send it out to one, to everybody for you all to sponsor it and then you guys would decide whether or not it qualifies to have a proclamation or not. That is basically for citizens requesting proclamations. Uh, when, when they're coming from you, we are pretty confident that you know that this person deserves and warrants a proclamation.
And I think the limit is if you get someone who's presenting a proclamation that you just think is completely re-deserved and, um, anti-city's vision and values, then my recommendation would be to just move collectively to remove that item from the agenda.
Any further questions?
Yes. I just have a question, uh, did we have a procedure already in place that, uh, was done? And what is the biggest, I mean, why are we changing, uh, that procedure with the, as opposed to adding to? That, I think the majority of the reasons that we're here is because we take up a lot of time and I think towards the last couple of presentations, our mayor, uh, along with the clerk, had started the clock, which I thought was ingenious. And I think that we should just add to what we already have. Why are we presenting a totally different, uh, resolution regarding it?
I wasn't aware that there was one.
And I think we should just be adding, uh, the, the time to it because I think we're overcomplicating it. You have council members trying to figure out, uh, who is deserving of a proclamation and then there's great areas that I know I thought that we had to now put in application for, uh, issuance of proclamation and I think there's just kind of...
I'm, I'm sorry, I did discuss this with the attorney, um, and so I did not know that there was one.
But I think that we should tell you this until you guys go back and...
While we get this, this discussion...
Right, yeah, yeah, I know, but I think that we were in agreeance, we were about to put it on the consent agenda right after this, but I just think that so that we're not just moving fast and going over something that we already have, we should probably allow you guys to get back to that.
I think one item, um, to think about, uh, Mayor Focasian Baker, is that the, the, uh, current one that you have, I'm not sure that it explicitly, uh, addresses the public request for proclamation. And so I think this one more so because the item that you're asking about, and I've done just a cursory review of it, you're applying it to yourselves when it really applies to how the public will request. So if I have a new business opening, how can I reach out to the city and say, "I'd like you to give a proclamation for the opening of..."
Right, I think, and I, and I agree with that, we can add that to what we already have. We also can add the time limit that the mayor has suggested we could. And, uh, there was another thing as far as the, the way that you receive them, as far as, uh, the equity in the presentations to the, uh, resolution that council will grant when we create...
Twenty seven, resolution number twenty seventeen, twenty three, this proclamation. And it does have criteria for when, uh, a proclamation should be issued. Uh, it also outlines who should have the request. And it also has the ten business days in here, which I, that's why I said go back to, because it's already in, the ten business days.
Okay, we will look at the original proclamation and, um, see if it needs to be tweaked any.
I'll order to do.
And if not, uh, I'm gonna get, I got it. Uh, and if not, then we will just go with the procedure that we have in place.
So let me be clear.
Thank you.
Let me be clear, now, my question was that no writing by the clerk, and you said no. No writing or proclamation by the clerk, and you said no.
Yes.
Uh, the, the reschedule, reduced to ten days, well, it's already in there. Uh, we, we talked about major and minor, and I think we answered that issue. It's only the person who does the reserving. And then, uh, Mr. Baker, your issue of, we need to go back and look, pull the rest, pull that and see how we can mend the merge and come up with something.
Yes.
But we need, at the, at the, at the, we need to come up with something that makes sense to all of us.
Yes, just so.
Okay, I'm sorry, you have a question?
I agree with everything my colleagues have said, I just think some of the things we have, um, we've already passed. I think our biggest challenge with it is making sure we have the operational part of it shored up the matchup of what we've already done. And so I think, um, that and, and you'll hear this later in some comments about other things, and I think that's what we need to focus our efforts.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Focasian, the next slide, please.
Next agenda item is the discussion on FY nineteen major budget amendment.
I'm telling the mayor, this is council. Um, this is what we have been working for, to have the twenty nineteen budget amendment. And before I have the finance to present the budget amendment, we have one area that wanted to start with, and that's the change of operation in parks and recreation. I think it has been the wish of the council members to have the police at the, to have face of the police officers at the parks and recreation. You instituted to have to rangers and those rangers now has been classified from bangers to be real police officers. So we are transferring the rangers into police officers. And the police officers will remain police officers under PD. We are transferring, we will request at the end of it, after this presentation, when you are adopting the budget amendment, during regular meeting, you'll be also adopting the approval of transferring budget from recreation into police. The police will remain police, the operation will be there, but they will be secondary to parks and recreation as we have secondary the police into the court system. So this issue has been discussed, uh, the manager is aware of this, the parks and recreation is aware of this, the police chief has also is aware of this and he is okay with that. There are several issues that we cannot have officers being managed by the parks and recreation because there is a civilian in the parks and recreation that can not supervise the officers. So there's still many officers under PD, but they will be secondary to parks and recreation. The parks and recreation director is to explain, the fire, uh, the police chief, I think, of this year. So they will explain how to work and then from there we'll get into the details of having, uh, our detail of budget amendment for amendment two.
Mr. Moxer. Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, as you may recall, with FY nineteen parks and recreation budget, we funded eight park patrol officer positions, uh, to exclusively provide police services to parks. In consultation with Chief Meadows, uh, as opposed to starting the division with eight brand-new officers with little to no experience, he recommended that we utilize officers with some experience in the initial startup of what we now call the park ranger division. These were always supposed to be post-certified police officers. In discussing with Chief Meadows, his recommendation was to use a model similar to what they use at the Atlantic Airport, but those officers are still part of APD, but they are functionally assigned to the airport. So they're still police officers, still under police, but they work at the airport. This would be a similar example to parks. In order to do that, the eight park patrol officers we originally funded, we are asking to refund that money into the police budget to create five police officer, two positions, corporal positions, and one sergeant position as a supervisory role. We will move the funding from parks into police. They will be direct reporting to the police chief, but functionally assigned to parks, essentially a park division, a park ranger division. So they will still have all their law enforcement guidance from Chief Meadows. They are still in the police department career track should they get promoted, but as they're assigned to park rangers, they will have a sole function in parks. Chief, did I essentially get that right? And so we're asking in the budget amendment to move the funding to create those positions I just mentioned. If all is approved, they will be functional during the major league beginning of the first part of May.
Before we go into the process, is there any reason why this is not working with the case?
It should be working now.
Should be, should be. Is there any, very simple difficulty? Oh, it's there. Those who are on the east lawn, now will start to report with the second.
Only one question, I heard, I guess, the chief, oh, we be losing eight officers from the street?
Well, right now, in the short term, yes. Uh, and so essentially what will happen, uh, um, essentially what will happen is that, um, uh, those positions will be reallocated over to parks and that frees up eight more positions for us to be able to, uh, recruit, uh, brand-new police officers, uh, to go to the street. So right now, I believe we have a total of fifteen police officers in the academy and about six, and about six that are in field training, should be coming out soon. And so that will give us the ability to send more people through the academy.
Any further questions or...
How, I passed, um, you said fifteen are in the academy and how many is in FTO?
Six or seven, I believe.
Six or seven, so how, what's the timeline? Will it be a, uh, a delay to get them?
So it usually takes us roughly around six months to get a person through the academy and through some parts of field training. So there would be about a six-month period, uh, where we will be able to replace those officers. But in the short term, what will happen is once the group that's in there now come out, then we'll be able to replace them with, with that move, that, uh, move over to parks.
Any further questions? Thank you all.
The second phase of our budget amendment is the main presentation of the budget amendment that you received, and this is the summary of what you received. This is the proposed budget. It will be budget amendment after your adoption during the regular meeting. If there will be any questions, please, let's discuss now. You can make any changes that you need, this is just the proposed, but it will become official once you have adopted it during the regular meeting. So I have with me the staff, Ms. Hens, the budget manager, as well as the Mr. Weidman, who is our budget analyst, to walk us through our budget amendment. And the manager will chip in at any time where he feels he needs to.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So this overview is to... Help you with the numbers that were sent out regarding our big year budget amendment. So I would begin with our revenue sources and you would see what we budgeted and what we actually received at a six-month period at March of twenty nineteen. First up, we in our revenue past, we budgeted twenty-three point nine billion and we received a million of much just a little bit, bringing in million. And I've broken down for you, um, the gross amounts of what we received, that's the prior year, um, interest income, permission, technical fees, for a total of, um, public tax income of twenty-seven million, five hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and three dollars. The next, um, base revenue sources are low production sales and this tax, we received just a little bit, thirteen million, um, of our budget. And then we have franchise taxes exceeded the month that we budgeted, we budgeted a million dollars, which is four million, four hundred ninety-six, four hundred fifty-six dollars and fifteen cents. Um, that's followed by our business and on vacation license, we budgeted one point eight million and received seven hundred sixty-three thousand, three hundred nine dollars and forty-four cents. Building commissions, we budgeted one point six million and received nine million, seventeen point four six point seven six. The idea is the revenue we're receiving from the county, uh, by the seat of that manager, and we spent about half of what we budgeted. And then other revenues are going to be interest rates and the taxes of services and that's for the total of what it was about five million. And we received today one point four million. But also revenue budgeted was seventy-one, just a little bit, seventy-one million. And our receipt today was forty-seven million, eight hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and three. So I wanted to start here so that you can see what our revenues are when we get to the amendments and how we came to that. And this is a breakdown of the, um, property tax receipts. So on the, on the prior slide, um, you had a negative amount, you had a negative amount on the prior year, that five hundred thirty thousand, four hundred and twelve. The reason for that is although we receive a hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars, there are some addresses that have been disputed by us in the county, so those payments were deducted by the county and that's total of six hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. So that's what the prior three negative on the prior page came from. We also received our property utility tax, the utility companies, and, um, the other re-interest payment and technical payment prior year, I discussed earlier. So our actual cash received in terms of, um, taxes is twenty-seven million, five hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and eight dollars. And then this is a breakdown of the franchise tax, um, what we budgeted and what we received and we received, uh, payments from, we just wanted to increase from our company. Um, and we, and that's how franchise, that's how come tax, PNC, and charge of power, for a total of one million, nine hundred and four thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty cents. So we received our budget on the franchise tax. And now I look forward to analysis of our expense. So we had budgeted just about twenty-six million, fifty and sixty-three dollars to cover personal services and benefits, fifty percent of that in six months would be eighteen million, twenty-five thousand, twenty-one dollars and fifty cents. And so at the six-month mark, we get spent fourteen million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars, which is seventy-nine percent of what we should have spent. So we should have spent about eighteen million, we actually spent, you know, forty million. Um, the main reason for that would be the vacancy rate. So we had about a twenty-four percent vacancy rate for the first six months of the year. Now, our second category would be services, most of those would be professional services. And at about fifty percent on six months, we should have spent about seven, on four million dollars, we spent six point six million, which is eight ninety cents of our six months. And then supplies, we spent fifty-two percent. So I wanted to show this to you, to show where the savings came from that we're using to fund the proposed, um, adjustments that we're asking for in the budget. So even though we have savings in all of our categories, there's some things that we needed to keep in mind when we were making the tools of some that take the fights away to those. So the fire department will be filling its existing vacancies, um, the police department as well will be filling their vacancies, fire is currently ongoing internal commotions and parks and recreation will be getting hiring for their summer programs. So we needed to make sure that we keep the funding for those things and not utilize that store savings in our whole stuff. On the operations side, because of timing difference in some of these buildings that have not been included in our total expenditure, the animal control contract for, since we have budgeted eight hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. We've not made any payments as of now, but we know that we owe about four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, so we needed to make sure those funds were made in sales books. The business, business permits, because the bill comes in one month after, we also needed to make sure funds or bills are for that, and so the business license and public works. So those things and that, um, we, we had shown when we were utilizing the savings that we need that not funding each department to cover those expenses. And so these are the items that we are proposing to find with this budget amendment. On economic development, drastic for fifty thousand dollars, um, for assistance with the business license payments, um, for community and regular department, seventy-five thousand for committing software, for the communications department, seventy-five thousand to assist with their brand marketing campaign, seventy-five thousand for doing resources with the professional services, for solid waste, the transfer from channel five, seventy-five thousand to... For solid waste, the transfer from general fund, seventy-five thousand to assist the amnesty day. Ninety thousand to assist the private apartments, utility bills. A hundred thousand to finance apartment, access to professional services. A hundred and fifty thousand to general services, which would appear as a maintenance. Fifty-nine-one-one contract, we've already paid that, it was four hundred and twenty thousand dollars more than I can budget it, so we need those funds to be approved, so we can add that to the moving funds, and a street line to permit was of two hundred and fifty-five thousand. So, those are the details of what we're asking for on the operations side. On personnel for operations, we funded the aides in the legislative districts. If you recall, most of those aides went full-time after the budget was adopted. So, we were a little bit short in salaries, so that means we would run out by the end of the year, and that's what we come to relieve. For most departments, we added, we're asking to add about fifteen thousand each straight, to ensure that there's enough funding there to cover all the aides that are not working full-time. And within the park's department, there was a request for additional staff to help with the summer program, but that would be funded by the park's department. So, the request is actually for the increase in personnel, not so much the dollars. And these are the proposed increase for our capital budget. So, we have public safety in city hall buildings, two-point four million, removal of mall in our recreation centers, five hundred thousand to pay for the tennis courts, and five hundred thousand furniture for the public safety building once they're relocated, a hundred thousand security cameras for the park's department, fifty thousand. We want to put back the funding to the elderly projects, that was the reason of finding Jacob's contract and G-Dad as well. Additional sixty thousand assists for the park somewhere, where the acquisition that may be upcoming, be coordinated with this budget. So, a total capital spending increase is four million, four hundred and seventy thousand. And now, this is just a general fund breakdown. So, we had budgeted... So, we had budgeted seventy-one million, and so, we're reducing our revenues by a little bit, five million to sixty-six million. And then our personnel on the expenditure side, we had twenty-six million. We're using eight hundred and sixty thousand in salary savings, and so, that reduces our personnel costs. And operations have increased one point three, one million, three hundred eighty-six thousand. Our capital for the reduction, all of this, we're asking that it be funded to borrow into this zero year. And we have to change here, with the two ninety-five, is to fund the two hundred and twenty thousand for E-nine-one-one, and the seventy-five thousand for the solid waste amnesty day. These forty thousand, we have budgeted twenty million, three twenty-six to the payment of the plan. Forty thousand was what we saved, so we're going to utilize that. So, the actual debt payment was twenty million, two hundred and ninety-six. So, with those changes, general fund would be deficient about two point seven million. And so, we're asking that whatever borrowing we use, that that deficit come from there, and that's what that balance is trying to show. The request is to ask to borrow about ten million dollars, six million of it would be used for competent projects, and two point seven, this is for the general fund operation, which would leave a surplus of one point one million. So, these next couple of slides, just to show you for the different, the nine of funds, what we budgeted and the changes. So, on E-nine-one-one, we originally budgeted one point seven million. We're increasing that two hundred and twenty thousand, so that budget would now be one point nine million. Okay. So, this side is the sanitation fund. Initially, we've already designed the unit that fund, because we changed our mode of operation there. As given revenue, is now going to be about a hundred and fifty thousand, which would not be enough to cover all of sanitation expense. So, we're asking for the seventy-five thousand transfer. So, we're anticipating that a hundred and fifty thousand that was coming from franchise fees can cover the expenses that we're about, but the amnesty day, we would need some additional funds to cover that. So, the operations for solid waste is now going from ninety million to about two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Okay. Hotel motel, we're making a change here. Initially, we did not budget any expenses here, but we've now budgeted a hundred and eight thousand dollars in expense that would be within using the park's department. And that would deprive some of the capital expenditure. And this final slide is the budget amendment, what we're asking for. So, basically, how about our total budget is going to go up from ninety million to about ninety-four million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand. And the changes that's gone to this slide before, we're going to increase our general fund by about two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. We're increasing our transfers to E-nine-one-one by two hundred and twenty thousand. We've been spending a hundred and eight thousand dollars on hotel motel revenue. The capital additions is four point four, four million, four hundred and seventy thousand. And then we have the reduction of solid wastes and the debt service that we've already paid. So, our total expenditure is ninety-three million, two hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. The reason why this office is a little bit more than on the general fund slide is because of the additional revenues from hotel motel that we have utilized, that has been used towards on the budget until comes up to this direction and how we want to use those funds. With that, I would take any questions that you may have.
Who will we start? Mr. Yung, Yung?
No, I was just checking to see if you worked. Yeah.
Just read you.
Yes.
You stood on there.
There, Matt, on you.
Okay.
Okay. I know we've asked a couple of times for these pages to be numbered, so I just self-numbered them, and I'm going to refer to them. So, I'm just asking you to keep them. When I'm going through the report, I see a couple of discrepancies. So, on page ten, the slide you just showed with colored squares, tiles, it says the tennis courts are five hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
And then on page eighteen, it says they're six hundred thousand dollars. But, in last month's city manager's report, I thought Mr. Donald, you said that USTA was kicking in. So, is this a match for them, or could you talk about that?
Pretty simple. So, we're in pursuit of the grant with USTA, and we will hear back from them within this fiscal year. But, I think what the finance department is attempting to do, or the CFO, the treasurer, is regardless of whether that goes forward or not, allocate the funding in the capital budget to be able to meet the need, and then to yield a portion of the hotel motel tax revenue to offset that total cost. And so, I won't speak for any of those numbers, but if you have, let's say, the hundred and eighty thousand from the hotel motel taxes to allocate towards the tennis court, then if the total cost was six hundred thousand, it would take it down to four eighty, and so, that's our four twenty, and so, that's what that would do.
So, so again, just to clarify, this is anticipating we don't get the funding.
Make sure that you're prepared to be able to meet the needs and we would not receive them.
But, when will we know the answer about that?
Within this fiscal year. I don't know the exact time. I know we went over it at the last meeting, but I believe it's within the next three months. Mr. Phillips, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Next, within the next three months.
So, that could be more potential savings. Okay, on page eighteen, the solid waste.
Can you, I'm sorry, I think I'm on the page. Can you tell me what the title of the page is?
Uh, yes, the title is... Background? Nope. That's, yeah. No, I'm sorry, I'm on page eight, which is... Proposed operations for funding?
Okay.
The solid waste amnesty day is seventy-five thousand dollars. I thought it was sixty-two thousand dollars. Did the price change?
Your request was actually sixty-two thousand. We've only left the seventy-five, just to ensure that we have sufficient funds. So, the initial request was coming from public works, which is still, but that was just a portion, to make sure that there's enough funds to cover that, because this is an estimate.
And so, this is just for the Merck Miles transportation?
This is just, the seventy-five thousand is just for the amnesty day, and the operations.
Places? What is the seventy-five thousand dollars, just for all?
All three, yes.
Um, you talked about the revised estimates for operating Merck Miles down to, I think you said three hundred and twenty-five dollars?
Uh, no.
So, and I'm sorry, have we decided that we are going to keep Merck?
Vote it.
Okay. And then, my last question is about economic development. I don't know if Mr. Pike wants to come forward. I have some questions about that. So, I'm looking at page... Three? Thank you. The title is summary of expenditures. First of all, I just want to say thank you so much for this page, Mr. Malazey. This is the most clearly explained chart I've ever seen of what we have left. Mr. Lee, can you go forward then? Mr. Malazey. Mr. Lee did ask the number, the page that, page D number, and then that, it's causing a little time confusion in trying to get it to the right, and they found it's three. I've been, thank you. Great. So, just for my colleagues, I'm on this page. Really awesome page. The, I see here that economic development has a million dollars left in its balance?
That's a, that's a different report.
That's a different report?
There are three reports in that one.
So, we haven't gotten today?
No.
Okay. I'll save this. Thank you.
Give me.
Okay. Here we are.
I want to talk about the changes in tax revenue, just the five point two million. And I know three point something is because of the insurance premium that we didn't get. And then the two point something million is for the annexation. So, I want to know where are we with trying to get the three point something something million that the county owes us?
I need to go back to the CFP.
And the two point, whatever, have, have we contacted the state, the Department, to find out whether or not that's accurate? And how did they, you know, miscalculate that?
On the deductions for the property tax, the six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, we have got, and we're actually coming for those addresses that they used to make those deductions. And we had a JIX look at those addresses to see if they were actually located within the city or south, or ten. JIX has to inform if they are located within the city. We have committed that back to the country and have asked for those funds to be remitted back to us, but with that kind of response, it's a fish, and it's now.
And how long is it?
Um, probably over a month. I'll have to get my email.
The solid waste fund went from nine million down to a hundred and fifty thousand. So, why was it increased so much?
So, if you recall, Constable Mendelius, when we adopted the budget, we were looking to mine in solid waste in-house. Then that mode of operations changed when we got it to remind by the various agencies, and all we would collect is a franchise fee. Based on our first four collection, which is about forty thousand dollars, we only actually paid, collected more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
You should give our insight about the expenses changing as well, that the expenses were at eight or nine million dollars, and they have also. You should try to mention that for the record, though.
All right. But I just want to say that the expenses also went down eight million as a solid waste, because, again, we're not managing it as we have talked when we submitted the original budget.
So, the operational priorities on our page, and I'm going to be the original page, so I'm not looking in the footage, so I have my own page. But, I see at the top, it says city hall purchase. And I don't remember having a discussion about purchasing the place city hall. I see one point four million dollars allocated to that. So, I wanted to know where that came from.
So, there is, if you recall, during the discussions, the city manager brought it up to say, we are, we want to put aside the money so that when time comes for the city hall to be, but at the same time, we have a need for public safety building. So, that one, a two point four million dollars may seem to be a good amount of money, but when you are, depends on what type of move building for public safety that you need. You know that we have a need of public safety building that will compose of OPD plus the court system. So, that's part of the, money's part of that.
But this is city hall, so I'm thinking.
Yes, we just took of what the, the piece that was brought from the city manager, just out of that.
So, I don't think that a request for a city hall or public safety center has come forward from the city manager's office. I think to provide some clarity is that there was a amount for one point eight million dollars placed in the proposal that we did discuss previously, and we have just, I believe that the CFO has just never removed it. But, it is, I'm assuming, to provide a cushion if that is something to attain real estate that the council would look at. If you did not want to move forward in that direction, it could potentially be cost savings that you could remove. But, I think as you look at acquiring a more permanent city hall or evaluate more permanent assets, then that is what those funds would be for. But, I don't think there's been an official request from the manager's office to move forward on any facility.
Remember everything that is here is proposed, and we added from that one point eight to add some to get into two point four billion dollars. So, if I remove, that will reduce the volume. So if I remove, that will reduce the volume.
Okay, so I did, I did this, I did the public works category, is a program manager, but I'm not going to tell them that. I'm not going to do that. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. And I'm going down to parts. Um, oh, I'm under the same page.
Yes, so this page was just the request that came in. Um, so we wanted to provide with all the requests that are coming from these different departments, but we're not funding everything. We wanted you to be aware of everything that was asked for. What we're funding is what is on our presentation.
Okay.
And that was what was sent out to you earlier, um, with the city manager's memo, and there was an additional page that showed everything that was requested.
That's right.
A couple of questions, I think, is how far about the page. How says the last tab before the blue tab, the last page before that? Is this proposed change reflecting that we are now building in a reserve or our adopted policy to give a three point seven million, three point seven five million?
I'm, I'm sorry, I just want to leave this page right before you go to the blue tab. This, this, this goes from that to the proposed amendment.
Under the budget. Under proposed budget, we will have a surplus of that one point two million should we operate according to, to this. Um, and that would be, yes, that would be our, our purpose that we have a surplus that can go towards helping to reduce unadded fund balance.
So it's actually one dollar, one point two?
Uh, provides that the budget amendment is provided.
Okay. And if we don't have all those things in, it would be three point seven?
Although the changes, that's the net of the changes that we are asking. So the amended budget, the surplus of just eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars.
That's current state, right?
Right.
So the proposed changes in this amendment, when we have a cap reserve anticipated.
Of one point two, right? Only one, um, point one is in the general fund. That is on the page that I presented, that the, our, this, uh, ability funding.
Thank you. So what percentage of that is overall compared to the policy we adopted?
So policy said that we should have at least three months of operations. That wouldn't even be critical.
And this one, this one does not remove us from the deficit fund balance. This, just during this time, if we borrow that money and we allocate it, there will be a balance of one point one, that you can either allocate it or can put it into fund balance. But it does not remove us that we are, we have not come out of the negative fund balance. If we borrow ten million dollars, we can borrow exactly what it is without that surplus. We can borrow nine or we can borrow eight, except if we borrow ten million dollars, we allocate everything that has been requested in twenty nineteen, we'll have a surplus of one point one million dollars that you can distribute it or can leave it to reduce the fund balance.
Where did the one point one, because this says one point?
So one point, one point one million dollars.
Okay, now, but they have difference announced, that's why I said on this page, and I see what they.
This is one point one million dollars, this is general fund. When you get into one point two million dollars, it adds, it includes one point, uh, hundred and eighty thousand for hotel motel. But this is general fund. We borrowed ten million dollars, we have used the six point six million dollars for capital funding and two point seven million dollars in operations. There will be a surplus of one point eight million dollars that you can use for other capital projects that have not been included, or we can use that one to reduce fund balance.
Because this chart reflects all of it. This one is just the general.
This is just general fund. And the last one? This one is, we are seeing the one point two million dollars because there's the one hundred and eighty thousand from, uh, hotel motel.
Okay, so you take that number plus the hotel.
Yeah, this is for all funds. The other one is only for general fund, which is the main fund that we use.
I was just trying to make sure I understood the difference in the two now.
This one.
Okay, uh, single words and few, few volumes.
So in other ways, this is the end of the, um, budget amendment, which will be tied to how are we going to fund those capital projects, which is coming to the next presentation that will be here, and the financial advisors with us. So me and the financial advisor are going to explain how we are going to make those, um, options of funding. I think this is the next, the other one? Should be a different word. That's for last time.
What is this saying?
Where's the problem? I see a different presentation.
It's me and Mr. Awal.
Yeah. Captain is funny.
Yeah, that's the correct one. So I just wanted to introduce Mr. Awal, that he is our financial advisor. He'll be making much of the talk. I'll be complimenting you while you're talking. This will be the, talking about the options of how we are going to borrow. Can we borrow up to ten? Can we borrow up to more than ten million dollars? How are we going to fund? Regardless of whatever we're going to fund, there will be no increase of tax, not even a cent, not even a mill of tax increase. That will be the main focus of what we're going to, uh, talk about, that will help you at the end of it during legislative meeting to adopt or to adopt the recommendation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The purpose of this presentation, if y'all remember from the last one, is, um, one is that you all need to, uh, add to your fund balance. If I can get it back to positive, get it three months, that's one. Two, you're capitalizing. Remember I said most folks buy houses with borrowed money. Y'all been spending cash money for two years. So I wanted to try to take that out of your budget and let you borrow it over a long-term basis. So the thrust of that is to help you get fund balance and your general funds up in three months and to fund your capital needs like everybody else does in America by getting a loan and borrowing money. You all have no long-term debt. So, um, uh, I won't go through bullet points here. I'd like to start, let's look at some of the capital needs that we had. Uh, there were some in the budget amendments. Here were some of the ones that I was able to come up with, um, the public safety buildings, city hall offices, uh, building improvements and parts, tennis court improvements, swimming pool repairs, fire station repairs, I saw mold removal at, uh, parks. Um, I would like you all to think about a retreat maybe of all the capital needs that you all would like to have get done. And, um, let's, uh, I think you, Mr. Gilleyard, always talk about a collaborative, strategic, long-term, I've already preached it all the time that I've been here, and, um, and, uh, I think that would be very beneficial if y'all could have like a work session to come up with that or a retreat, but here were some of the items that I come up with. The next part is talking about how we go about funding. Your twenty eighteen tax digest is two billion nine hundred and twenty-eight million. Again, I tell you, y'all are a really big town. I have lots and lots of clients in South Georgia, their whole counties, that only have a tenth of what your digest is. The state of Georgia's constitution says you can have general obligation bonds, but the bonds approved by the voters are ten percent of your digest. So your cap under the state law is two hundred and ninety-two million. And, um, y'all, y'all borrow all that if you want to, but I don't think you want to do that. And, um, each one mill will support two hundred, two million nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And so, um, you all have tremendous borrowing capacity, uh, you're, uh, great, uh, credit as far as I'm concerned, with that kind of tax digest, you'll have no trouble borrowing money. One of the other ways that you can borrow money is create an urban redevelopment agency. The state of Georgia law will allow you all as mayor and council by resolution to create a URA, Urban Redevelopment Agency. And I told you last time, Fulton County has them, Clayton County has them, most cities have them, and it's a way for them to borrow money with the same collateral as the general obligation bond, because you don't have to go to the voters to get that. And, um, URA is a little bit different, that you all have to create a urban redevelopment plan in the whole area of whatever you're going to do. And then, then geo-bonds allow you to borrow for a whole bunch more stuff. URA is limited to what you can do under the revenue bond law. Let's look at, uh, your, your URA binding capacity. You have a military cap and you chart a thirteen point four six nine mill, currently eleven, levy eleven point five seven nine mills. So you have capacity under your cap of one point eight nine mills. Every one mill raises two point nine million. So that one point eight nine mills times two million nine twenty-eight for every one mill, says you have five point five million per year underneath your cap that you're not using. A ten million dollar bond issued for twenty years at a current rate of three and a half percent will, will, will have annual payments of seven hundred and three thousand. So seven hundred and three thousand is equivalent to a quarter mill. You know, one mill is two million nine, seven hundred and three thousand is only a quarter of that. URA could borrow twenty million for a half a mill. And I like to translate this to your constituents and your citizens, what does that mean? Uh, a, a half a mill on two hundred thousand dollar house is forty dollars a year. If you borrow ten million, it'd be twenty dollars a year. Capital needs funding says you can use a downtown development authority or a development authority, and it's limited to a three mill backing, but it's only for for-profit private stuff. The URA will be for government stuff. Note that your military cap of thirteen point four six nine mills, the three mills backing from projects under a DDA or a development authority would be separate and far from all that. And, um, you know, a downtown development authority, a development authority has its public purpose, the promotion of trade industry, commerce and employment opportunities. You remember the old Supreme Court case I talked about, Union City versus Odom, where they used a DDA to do a city hall, and they said people would buy sandwiches and pay fines and all shop in downtown. The Supreme Court said that's not enough private economic activity, and that project didn't fit. Then you can also do tax anticipation notes like y'all used before. As your financial advisor, I'd like you not to use that, because you got to pay it all by December thirty-one. So, uh, you always have plenty of tax revenues as long as Fulton County can get their tax digest approved. Uh, if they don't, then you know y'all have a problem, you had that in tow. But tan is not a long-term plan. Every December thirty-first, you got to pay it all. So what I'd like you all to do, and staff would like y'all to do, is authorize us to bring you back a resolution to create an urban redevelopment agency to finance your capital needs, and then you all maybe have a retreat to come up with what you want your capital needs to be. Um, open questions.
Mr. Kareem?
Hey, thank you so much for your presentation. Um, I was having a conversation with the city management and folks yesterday about the URA, and, um, I'm sorry, it's my, it's, uh, I know with Invest Atlanta, the same board for Invest Atlanta, like, you know, they close at the beginning ten o'clock and they open like at eleven. And so what is your, uh, thought about that? Could we have our development authority board also be the board for the URA?
That's completely up to you all. The URA can, I think, have five or seven members. Uh, some places have you all as the mayor and council, serve as the board of the URA.
I guess, I guess I'm asking issues of coordination. So the first is, if we have a DA and a DDA and a URA, is it advisable for the boards to share members to help coordinate the work that they're all doing separately?
I mean, um, the worst thing that could happen to you is you appoint authority and run all from you, if we're doing what you want to do. So, uh, if you've got three boards times seven, that's like twenty-one members, that's harder to get twenty-one folks and not get a bad apple in that, in there. So if you could appoint seven folks and all seven folks do all the stuff, I think it'd be advisable. Yes.
So, then the next, the, the next part is, um, I know when you and I had lunch, you talked about these being tools in the toolkit. Do you have any advice or guidance around, there are cities that have all of these in play at one time?
Yes.
Um, is that advisable? Could you just talk about how having all of these at one time or in stages, how that could help us diversify our tax digest? Because as you can see, fifty-eight percent of our taxes are coming from taxpayers, and that seems a little high.
Yes. So a DDA is going to have jurisdiction of whatever y'all designate as a downtown area. So that leaves the whole rest of the city without, without a tool to grant tax payments. So I think you need a DDA and a development authority. Neither of those can do governmental projects, so you need a URA. So it would be my advice to you to get all three of them in.
Thank you.
She can't get in. Gilleyard?
So I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
One of them is, if we develop the DDA, do we not have to increase our military?
No, ma'am, you do.
Beyond, beyond the thirteen?
No, ma'am. So what I said was that there's an additional three mills that could be dedicated to the DDA. You ain't got to do it. You can do one of them, you can do half of them. And so pretty much what you'd want to do is, is you create the DDA and then empower them to come up with a project that will help promote trade industry, commerce and employment opportunities. Then you all as mayor and council will evaluate that project, decide how best to finance it. And one way to finance it is up to three mills of levy, but you ain't got to do it.
Okay, but we still have to increase that.
If, if you want to, you do not have to. The DDA could be created, they can find ways to do projects on their own without you giving them any, any support. Some cities do that.
So, so my real concern is that in two weeks, we'll be two years old, and we're comparing our city to cities that are years and twenty years and thirty years more, two years old. So we're, right now, we're really crawling.
Yes.
And we're trying to run, and, um, we're making a difference. And I think we need to slow down until we get back to, you know what I'm going to say?
Yes, ma'am, go on.
Well, we really, what we really do need to come up with a plan before we start jumping around everywhere, and that's what we're doing. And we don't have a plan in place to say, okay, in twenty nineteen, we're going to do A. In twenty twenty, we're going to do B. Twenty one, we're going to do C. And can we all three hit the same time?
Yes, that's right.
Ms. Willis?
Thank you. Um, I enjoyed your presentation. Um, you made that easy, a little easier. Um, for a DDA, isn't it true that we would have to designate an area to be downtown?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just want to, just as you get back, what Mrs. Gilleyard just said, you think we need to be intentional?
Say it again, ma'am.
I think we need to be intentional about what we do. I think we need to take our time. And the other thing I think we need to do, we as a mayor and council, we need to sit down together and talk about all of these things. Get us all involved, talk about all these things, and like you said, move us forward at the right time. I don't think nobody, everybody here is clear, that all three can work. Everybody's clear about that. All right? Well, what, 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 how, when do we start at? And then once we start, how long do we go before we bring something else in? I think that's a logical solution, that all of us can grab our arms around. I like the URA. I mean.
once then, you, you had everybody here overweight about the U R A. It just makes, because it just makes sense to do it. Okay, Mr. Karim?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I mean, it doesn't make sense. Um, we right now have, is it hundred, eighty thousand dollars in our contingency, Mr. Malazie?
Eighty.
Eighty. Out of a hundred million dollars, but we have eighty thousand dollars in our contingency. So out of the three development authorities, the one that I am least interested in is the one that will build buildings that don't pay property taxes. So fifty-eight percent of our city is being financed on the backs of our taxpayers. I think that we need to diversify our tax digest. And the way that we do that is by building up commercial properties. Um, but in all of your decades of experience, what you just said, and I want to make sure that we are all listening, because I know that sometimes we don't listen to the professional advice that is given. But you as our city financial planner have just said that we should do all three right away.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. All right, see you tomorrow, yes, and keep up the good work.
Thanks, sir.
It's a matter of that we, uh, what is a concession for personnel, real estate and utilization?
Second.
All right, move to second discussion. Are those favorites?
That was, I mean, that was, I showed you that.